Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Winnetka Village Council Study Session for June 11th, 2024. I'd like to call the meeting to order, ask everybody to mute your, there she is, cell phones and electric devices. And our first order of business this evening is pub public comment. So if there's any, oh, oh, yeah, it's only in yellow. Rob, could you please call the roll?
I will, thank you. Trustee Apitoff?
Here.
Trustee Orsek?
Here.
Trustee Handler?
Here.
Trustee Dearborn?
Here.
Trustee Alvinson?
Here.
President Rents?
Here. Okay. Public comment, this is the time of the evening where anybody in the audience can address village council on items not on the agenda. So if you'd like to share your thoughts with us on anything except for streetscape, you're welcome to come up. And our first speaker is Ted Winienchenko.
It'll be interesting if the PAC says names aren't required. In any case, hi, Ted Winienchenko. So today you're going through a session. So just to remind you, September 21st, 2021, April 12th, 2022, two meetings about thing, about selling public land, setting a price has no reason to stay confidential at this point. Land is gone, it's been sold, closed. It'll be interesting to see if the public is entitled to open government or not. Because that sort of brings me to my other concern, which, you know, generally is the lake shore. And, you know, it occurs to me that there is clearly a tale of two cities here, right? The street ends on the lake shore, they get closed, they get privatized, the village turns a blind eye, village takes downstairs that councils had said should stay there for public access, they put up fences across public roadways where stone steps had been to allow lake shed access. And that all happens and people like me, you know, complain about it and nothing changes. And then we have construction at two of five Sheridan. And I've been out there now a couple of times. And, you know, it's interesting because that beach has been raised like six feet. I mean, there's a ton of new sand there. And you notice that the border with the park district, it's up like three feet already. And it's only going to go higher because when you look at the approved plan, you see that there's a, going to be a gradual gradation down over park district land. And I find that fascinating. When I built my house 10 years ago, we have, you know, six foot side yards. And we were required by the village to put a depression in that six foot side yard, a little swale, six inches, to make sure that any rainwater that fell on our side yard would come back to us, wouldn't drift over to our neighbors, even though the natural state of it was flat. And here we have this massive project, which is being allowed to put in these huge mountains of sand, which is only going to serve to increase erosion on the Centennial Beach. How is, it's just fascinating to me. I guess they get special preference, as well as the fact that there is now this rather large, I'm going to say four by four by who knows how long, massive concrete structure that has been almost completely buried under the sand in an area of that property which had no sand before, it was lake. And it's buried, and it clearly seems like a permanent structure. There's a post tension cable running through it. I mean, it's been, looks like it's been designed to, you know, support itself over a longer span. And it's funny, right? Because you ask about that, it's not on the plan, there's not much of an answer from the core, from the IDNR, from the village. It's like, hmm, we'll see, ongoing construction. So it'll be interesting to see if this structure that isn't even on the plans at all, if the owner is going to be required to excavate that whole thing out and rip it out, or if it's just gonna, you know, be something that happens because, well, you know, he's more important. Have a nice day.
Glenn Deutsch?
I put myself down to talk later.
Oh, later? Okay.
That's what it was.
That's okay.
Yep.
Rocky?
Evening, council. I'm Rocky Flunerman. I am a volunteer at the Winnetka Farmers Market. I thought, would you like a quick update as to where we are? We are two markets in. We had a Mother Nature problem on opening day. She held off until about 10:45, 11 o'clock. But our shoppers actually watched the news the night before, and our nine o'clock people came at eight o'clock. So we had a pretty good turnout. Last week was much better, and we were belly to belly and butt to butt from about eight o'clock until noon, which I liked a lot. I would guess the crowd was somewhere between, I'm just a guess, 1,800 to 2,000 last Saturday. This Saturday, we are in competition with the Winnetka Music Festival, not a problem. But our entrances, north and south, will be open for our vendors to get in and out. We will have 48 vendors this Saturday. We are primarily a food market this year, a little different from the years past. It's about 80% food, about 20% what, retail? And I think that our, our villages are really enjoying this market. So that's it. That's my update. Thanks for listening.
Thanks, Rocky. Karen?
I pass.
Oh, okay. You can stick around for the conversation? Okay, good. All right, well, that's, that, anybody else like to speak? Tom, as long as you're here, got a couple, couple words for us? Okay. All right, we'll move forward with the next item on the agenda, which is the Hubbard Woods Streetscape Design Concepts Review. Tonight's staff and TESCA associates will present two streets, eh, I am stumbling today, Streetscape Design Concepts for the Hubbard Woods Business District and share the input and feedback that was gathered from community regarding the designs. Council will then provide direction to staff regarding the presented design concepts. Community Development Director David Schoen is here to introduce, and we've got Jody Mariano from TESCA here tonight.
Good evening, President Rents and trustees. So over the last several months, staff has been working with Jody from TESCA and with the community to start developing a concept plan for the Hubbard Woods Business District. We have presented two Streetscape Concepts to the community. One would require the village to take control of the Green Bay Road right of way, as IDOT generally does not allow certain improvements within their right of way, the state right of way. The other concept would remain within state's control, but would limit what improvements we could make within the right of way. This evening, Jody is going to review the process to date, review the two Streetscape Concepts, as well as summarize what we've heard from the community regarding the two concepts, which is the community generally prefers the concept that gives the village the greatest flexibility to improve pedestrian safety within the corridor. And that is the village taking control of the Green Bay Road right of way through a jurisdictional transfer. This evening, we are looking for input from the council in terms of further pursuing a Streetscape design that would require a jurisdictional transfer for the Green Bay Road right of way. If the council is interested in at least furthering the pursuit of this option to study, the next step would be for the village to share the concept with IDOT and to discuss the jurisdictional transfer. Then staff would need to report back to the council regarding what that all means in today's terms with IDOT. Again, I would like to preface our presentation that we are currently working on is a Streetscape Concept Plan. So what we're working on is similar to what we initially did for the Elm Street Business District back in 2017. It's a concept. And once we complete preparing the concept, we'll need to make refinements based upon further study. Given it's an IDOT right of way, whether or not we pursue a jurisdictional transfer, which is a detailed study evaluating the impacts of the proposed improvements, including traffic impacts, we need to do this phase one, whether it remains state or we take it over. And as we go through this evening, you'll hear there are things we will need further study to determine the impact of those design concepts. I would note that Jim Bernal, the Director of Engineering, is also here with us this evening to answer any questions. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jody.
Thanks. In this jurisdictional transfer, are there, what are the financial benefits to this village if we go that route? Or are there any financial benefits to the village?
Traditionally, the way jurisdictional transfers have operated with municipalities is the state is desirous of offloading this inventory on these small local roads that they still own. So in years gone by, they would pay a significant or a majority of the portion of the work to bring it up to, today would be, you know, 21st century standards. And then they deliver it to us and we maintain it and own it from that point on. When Rob and I met with them the last time, they, and this is during COVID, if I don't, if I can't, they had seemed to be coming back on that, saying, oh, we don't have any money to do that anymore. We'd be happy to give it to you if you'd want it, but we don't have the same amount of money. So they were starting to set up that conversation in that fashion already. But that's the financial-
So it could have been good.
Well, but, but the bad news is, is then we're on the hook for maintaining it forever.
Right.
Which Glencoe seems to think it's a good idea, and they've done it. Has Allen Park done it?
No.
Well, Matt, yeah, we don't want to use it as an example, but-
No.
But they did it.
In the, in the past. Jody, can you turn your mic?
Sorry. In Glencoe, you have the metro parking lot on east side and downtown on the west side. And so Glencoe is able to do things like mid-block crossing, landscape plantings, bike lanes, that would not have been permitted under an IDOT ownership. And so having jurisdictional transfer allowed them to do those improvements.
But it sounds like there was a potential financial reason to do it before, but we're not sure if that's going to happen.
Well, when we started the conversation, yes.
I, I had done two jurisdictional transfers in other towns where that was the case, where IDOT would typically, when they wanted to offload a road, the way to incent towns to do that is to bring it up to current standards, up to a certain year road standard, 30, 40 year standard. And then, you know, they would typically pay for the, the infrastructure, they wouldn't pay for the finishes. So like light posts and things that we wanted that are amenities, they typically wouldn't pay for. But the majority of the cost of this is the baseline infrastructure.
Do they need, so if we decide not to do that, IDOT has to repair the road, but not necessarily on our timeline?
We'd have to work that out with them, but most likely not on our timeline. Usually you can work those out and try, but it's not always a given.
But then they'd have to pay for it?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's unknown as to what level they would bring it up to.
Got it.
But we also have infrastructure in there. We have water main.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And there, so there's work that we need to do, too.
What, what is the current state, though? Because our plows plow it, right? I mean, we currently have an intergovernmental agreement where they reimburse us. So what does that financially look like each year?
I'd have to get back to you.
Okay.
It is, you know, it's a typical state formula for us to do certain maintenance on the roads, you know, small, small grade patching and, you know, plowing.
Plowing, okay. Just to clarify. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Jody, you ready for Jody?
We're ready. Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Jody Mariano. I am a principal landscape architect with TESCA Associates. I think I know most of you and appreciate the opportunity to talk to you about Hubbard Woods. Just like David said, we've been working with staff and the community on the Hubbard Woods Streetscape. So I'm going to kind of take you through what we've heard so far and where we're headed about this project. Now that Elm Street District is done and implemented, the village has turned to Hubbard Woods Streetscape to build upon what improvements were made in the Elm Street Business District. And so the focuses, folk eye, are to improve pedestrian safety, parking, lighting, the pavement, site furnishings, signage, trees, plantings, outdoor seating and dining, all the things that make people feel comfortable and want to walk around. Do you want me to wait until that's set up? Oh, okay, I'll keep going. So Hubbard Woods is a very different character than what we have in the Elm Street District today. Some images here, but I think some of the words that have been used to describe it are high quality, curated, some really great businesses. And those businesses do a fabulous job of their business on the inside, but they also project individuality on the outside through displays, paint, signage, outdoor seating in some cases. And what we want to do is we want to find the right balance to invite pedestrian use and still allow those businesses to kind of project their unique character. The study area that we're looking at is the Hubbard Woods Business District. So in this, in this map, north is to the right. So Tower Road is at the left. So we're looking at essentially Green Bay Road from Chatfield Road, which is the first block south of Tower, all the way north to the limits of Winnetka and Glencoe, which is at Scott. And the village has been partnering with the village of Glencoe to include study of the area north of Scott, all the way to kind of the northern limits of the Hubbard Woods Plaza Shopping Center there. We have a couple of traffic signals. We've got a traffic sig, two traffic signals at Tower Road. And then we've got on Green Bay Road, and then we've got a traffic signal at Gage Street, and another traffic signal is Scott Avenue. So where we are, we have had some great community feedback so far, thanks to staff in helping us promote the project. We had 580 people respond to the first community survey that was opened between November 9th and January 7th. Then we went to work producing some preliminary plans in January in preparation for our public open house, which was held at Town and Oak on January 30th. Following the meeting, we had 50 people that came to that meeting, by the way. Following that meeting, we had an online activity that essentially showed the same level of information that was at the public meeting, but allowed more people to participate. 111 people participated in that. So we were able to get a wider net of feedback, which was really helpful. And then, of course, tonight, we're here. So following today, we would look forward to, with your approval, of course, a meeting to discuss with IDOT, get some feedback from IDOT regarding whether jurisdictional transfer or not is on the table, and then develop some final concept plans and cost estimates, go back to IDOT one more time. And then at that time, then we'd be presenting to the second public meeting and another online public input activity. And then we come back to you to share those materials and also to get your feedback. Just like David said, the outcomes of the study is a high level concept plan. It's going to have some high level costs to support that, but really it requires detailed engineering before we have a very specific plan and costs. And a lot of that has to do with things that are not part of this scope, like grading and drainage and all the very detailed engineering things that we really don't want to do until we get through all of this public outreach. So we're really looking to kind of get a pulse read from the community, what the appetite is for improvements, so that we can then go into a more detailed engineering related study. So before I kind of take you on a little tour from south to north, I want to really show you the main differences between these two concepts. So as David mentioned, we're looking at whether the road continues to be maintained by IDOT, which is what we call option A, or whether it would be jurisdictionally transferred to the village and then is controlled by the village. So in this scenario, and I just picked Gage and Green Bay Road just as an example to illustrate, Green Bay Road is controlled by IDOT. IDOT is in the business of continuing to move traffic very efficiently along the corridor. And so for those reasons, decorative features like bump outs and decorative crosswalks are not permitted by IDOT. And so in this diagram you see up here, painted crosswalk across Green Bay Road. And then once we're off the corridor, we can do some decorative things on the Gage Street side. So on the east side, for instance, we can do some bump outs, we can have some site furnishings, some plantings. We've test fit some, some amenities just to kind of show the scale of things like benches and trash cans, just so you can get a feel for what can fit out there. But across Green Bay Road would remain essentially as it is today. And then there's a little section at the bottom that kind of explains that. So that's option A. Now, if it was controlled by the village via jurisdictional transfer, we could do more decorative things. And what that looks like could be something like this, which means that now across, we keep everything on Gage Street that I just described, but along Green Bay Road, now we can have decorative crosswalks, we can have bump outs that shadow the on-street parking on Green Bay Road. What that does is that gives pedestrians a shorter distance to cross. It also allows pedestrians to kind of stand closer safely behind the curb, but closer to the road to look both ways to make that crossing, and it slows down cars. It does make it less convenient for cars, so cars that do things like bypassing by a, by a right turn, for instance, is not permitted in a, in a scenario like this. And this is similar to what we've already seen implemented on Elm Street. So it prioritizes pedestrians, it allows cars to move, but it's not prioritizing cars. That's the main difference, really. And so again, we can have more space for amenities, plantings, benches, and any amenities that get placed out there really should relate to what's happening on the land use side. So for instance, where we're next to a restaurant, places for outdoor seating and dining, or, you know, places for plantings. Any questions about IDOT versus not IDOT before I go further? I'll keep going. Okay, so with the two different options in mind, just for the purposes of this discussion, I'm going to take you on a tour from south to north, and I'm just going to show the village-controlled option, just for clarity. So this is the southern end of our district. This is Chatfield Road down at the bottom of the screen, north is up. So this is if, you know, Green Bay Road heading from south to north. So the concepts are showing decorative pedestrian crosswalks, accent corner bump outs, and landscape plantings where we can fit them. Things like that can help make the walls of the outer street feel like it's more prominent, like the edges are moving in a little bit. And typically, and corridors like these, the more you can landscape the sides, the more you can add decorative finishes to things like crosswalks and accent corners and vertical things like, like light poles. Those things all contribute to traffic calming, which is something that we heard a lot about in the public outreach. So extending northward, additional pedestrian crosswalks at Tower Road and Green Bay Road. Tower Road and Green Bay Road is a really complicated intersection, as everyone knows. We've got two traffic signals and there's a lot of traffic movements that are sort of complicated by the designated turn lanes, access to parking lots. And just as we mentioned earlier, we're not doing a detailed traffic study, but we do think that traffic study is warranted following this study. And we think that this intersection is one of the things that should be studied further. We can do the best we can in the pedestrian realm by enhancing crosswalks, landscaping, streetscaping on the edges. But when it comes to actually managing or potentially making changes to the traffic circulation, that's where a traffic study will come into play. Working our way north, so this is Tower Road now at the south part of the corridor. So coming up north, we have, today there's a banner that kind of hangs above the street in this location, and, you know, it's, it's, it's great, it's so nice to have a street that's of a scale that you could have that type of signage. And so one of the recommendations that you'll see further down the slides is to formalize that so that it's no longer strung up between, I think, a light pole and a tree, but could have its own freestanding poles with a more prominent sign. That could, oh, I thought that was a message to me. It's time to clean the air filter. So the signage can be more formalized. We are showing the existing on-street parking. Generally, as it is today, I'll take you through some parking counts in a little bit, and then also street trees along the corridor. We have noticed when we're out there that there is a lot of pedestrian movement, people darting across the street. There's great businesses on both sides of the street, and so that movement continues. We earlier talked about providing a couple of mid-block crossings. Now, this is something that IDOT would not permit, but if the village controls it, we could consider a mid-block crossing. And so in that red circle, we show a potential location for a mid-block crossing near Town and Oak, where we see a lot of that movement happening. And then continuing further to the north, so where I just left off, just for reference, you see where the red circle is, Town and Oak, and the north of there is the Walgreens Building. Down at the bottom of the screen now is the Walgreens Parking Lot and the section between Gage and Merrill, which is kind of the heart of this district, the center point of the district. Gage has a traffic signal, and we're showing the bump outs that we looked at earlier. And then as we continue to the north, Merrill Street is a very, another very challenging intersection. We have a lot of cars that are, cars and trucks, that are exiting what we call the horseshoe area. The horseshoe area is the area, it's immediately to the east, framed by Gage Street, Tudor, Tower Court, and Merrill Street. And lots of traffic is exiting Merrill Street, but it's a really difficult intersection, not great visibility for pedestrians. And you see cars that are inching out into the intersection, creating a lot of conflict. So the proposal is to incorporate a four-way stop sign there at Merrill Street, just to help control the traffic a little bit better, give pedestrians a break and a place, time and space to make that movement. The other recommendation for this area is today there's a existing Pace Bus Stop down south of Gage near the sushi restaurant. And since it's such a busy intersection, the consideration was to work with Pace to relocate that bus stop from the sushi restaurant corner north to the southeast corner of Merrill and Green Bay Road. What that does is that frees up that corner near the sushi restaurant and still gives great access to the park. It's not too far away from where it is today. I'm going to take a break from Green Bay Road to talk about the horseshoe area. So Green Bay Road, these are three concepts for this area that, that we call the horseshoe. So the Green Bay Road corridor is on the left-hand side of each of the diagrams. Gage Street is at the south on the bottom, Tower Court is on the right at the east, and then Merrill Street is at the north. So as part of the public outreach, we evaluated three different concepts for this area. We know that Merrill Street intersection at Green Bay Road is really challenging. And so in order to help that and also address other pedestrian circulation issues, we wanted to test a few different ideas with the community that looked at new circulation for the horseshoe area. So option one on the left looks at keeping the one-way movement exactly as it is today, adding some additional on-street parking up at Merrill Street, and adding decorative features like bump outs, and then, of course, the stop sign at Green Bay Road. I will just, to give it away, that was the concept that the community liked the best. The other options that were looked at, option two looks at reversing the flow, meaning Merrill Street would be one-way eastbound. And then we would go southbound on Tower Court and then westbound on Gage Street. I will say, there is a public parking garage, as everybody knows, kind of at the north corner here, at northeast corner of Merrill Street and Tower Court. And so we wanted to provide as much visibility and access so that people would use that parking lot. The third concept looked at making Merrill Street a two-way at the north side of the horseshoe, giving people an option to get in, in and out of the parking lot, the parking garage, and then an option to turn around at that turnaround if they needed to, but then otherwise, southbound on Tower Court and then westbound on Gage Street. So as I mentioned, option one was the option that people liked the best. Of course, Hubbard Woods Park is a, is a, is a gem, and there's no plan to make any changes to the park, but rather to really just focus on the spaces around it, the perimeter treatments.
I, I would just like to know, we included option three because from the Downtown Master Plan from 2016, that was a concept that was indicated as something we should explore. And that was, again, trying to provide people a more direct access to the public parking garage, as Jody said. So that's why we included that option, because it was something that came out of public input back in 2015, 2016.
Can you do the stop sign at Merrill Village owned or IDOT owned?
So if, if IDOT were solicited for a stop sign, they would need to see if it meets warrants. I'm saying engineering words and Jim is nodding, but I don't know for sure. I think what they look for is they look for the traffic study, which would have to be done first. And then they look for distance between the other existing controlled stops like the signal, whether that meets the right distance. Do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, so that's correct. So what we would do is, there-
So what we would do is, there would be a traffic study, they'd want to see if there was a warrant. If it meant warrants following the uniform, the MUTCD manual, which is the manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, they usually set warrants, and it's based on the volume of traffic in both directions, the volume of pedestrian traffic, and that's what sets whether it's required or not. If we were to JT this, we would still follow the same standards, but we would have a little bit more flexibility than IDOT would as it comes to that component.
Right, okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jim. All right, we can certainly come back to this, but I'll keep going for now. Okay, so continuing up to the north, we're almost through the corridor. So at the section between Merrill and Scott, that red line just to the south of Scott Street is where the limits of Winnetka and Glencoe are, of course, and so there would be additional streetscape parkway improvements, new sidewalk, on-street parking would remain, street trees and light poles, and then we would have our bump outs at Scott Street. And so here where we are in jurisdiction of Village of Glencoe, we have been discussing with Glencoe, and we understand that there may be future potential changes to the Hubbard Woods Plaza, and so Glencoe's desire is to set this up so that future changes to the streetscape would follow whatever development pattern happens, but that the desire is to protect trees, provide a continuous sidewalk. There is not a continuous sidewalk up there today, and then access into the businesses. There was a consideration for also providing a controlled stop sign at Linden Avenue, which I will say was mixed, had mixed results at the public meeting. There are also, as you know, as this comes around the bend, there are some steel guardrails, traffic barriers, which are kind of unsightly, and there are some nicer-looking versions of those things that we can recommend that are really just decorative.
So our border stops at the south side of the sidewalk. I thought, for whatever reason, I thought it was on the other side of the sidewalk, was the north side of Scott. No?
Is that the blue line?
Oh, yeah, it's the blue line, so...
So it's in the middle, middle of the street.
So if you can follow the blue line, if you look at where Scott Avenue is, oh, here, I can point to this. So here...
Middle of the street.
Middle of the street, and then it comes up, and then it comes over.
Oh, okay. Good, thank you. That's helpful.
Yeah. Okay, so a couple of things about parking impacts. So there really are not huge changes to parking in this, in either of these plans, but the red bubbles represent on-street parking, the green bubble represents the horseshoe area, which, as you remember, has three different concepts that we were looking at, and then the blue represents off-street public parking, whether that be public parking lots or the garage up at the north. So the tables here represent existing parking on the left, and then you can see if we have the IDOT scenario, what that parking count looks like, and then the village-controlled scenario, what that parking count looks like. We are all kind of within just a couple of parking spaces between each of them, and if we total everything out, today, the base parking, all the parking minus the horseshoe area, we have 430 spaces. If it is the IDOT-controlled concept, we gain three just by efficiencies, and the village-controlled concept, we have 431. And then we get into our different scenarios for the horseshoe option. You can see we're always hovering around 500 or 502. I mean, we're just kind of splitting hairs, but things like bump outs, mid-block crossings, those take up parking space. I will mention, too, we didn't show it on this plan, but if you look at the south part where the public parking lot north of Tower shows 24 spaces, that is Tower Court on the west side. There are also spaces on the east side that are commuter spaces, which are not factored into this calculation, but I just wanted to make sure that you all knew that that is also parking. So some key takeaways, after we went through the meeting, both surveys, everything kind of, you know, filtered down, nine major points kind of bubbled to the top, and this is not a surprise, but prioritizing pedestrian safety is really, really important. People are really speeding down that road, and there are some really high-quality businesses and high quality of life that we're trying to maintain. So things like enhanced crosswalks, mid-block crossings, bump outs, the stop sign, these are all things that we heard people would like to see. That ties into number two, which is calm speeding traffic, and bump outs are one way to do that. There are some parking impacts, and people are sensitive to that, and need to make sure that those things are managed. Traffic study needs to be done to evaluate the traffic improvements further, such as the stop sign at Merrill and Linden, and possible circulation enhancements around the horseshoe, and also the intersection at Tower. Lighting improvements are desired year-round. Streetscape furnishings should generally, we had a lot of questions about this. Should we carry forward what we already see in the Elm Street business district? Should we deviate a little bit? And what we heard generally was that people would like to see what's been done in Elm Street with a few differences. Those differences are different tree grates, different holiday decor, and different banners. And I've got some imagery that we can look at. Supporting business vitality and individuality is something that is also very important to the community and businesses. Holiday decor and displays is something that people would like to see more of. And at the end of kind of evaluating all of these, it leads us, as the consultant team, to believe that in order to achieve these improvements, it would require a jurisdictional transfer of Green Bay Road. So here are some images of the amenities. So the existing items from Elm Street that people would like to see carried forward in Hubbard Woods are on the left, so these are all the things that you're familiar with, the benches, the pavers, the planter pots, the bollards, trash and recycling. We always said at the beginning that just for maintenance purposes, the pedestrian-scale lighting and the vehicular-scale lighting should be carried forward because it helps public works to kind of keep their parts and maintenance intact. The new elements, though, on the right-hand side of the screen, that people were interested in were different tree grates, so there's a pattern there at the bottom, holiday lighting and decor. People really liked to have something that really set this apart, is its own unique identity. And I will say that in order to achieve what we see on the top right, we need mature trees, and so it might take a little bit of time to get that canopy for those orbs. And then people liked these event banners that incorporated some sort of custom medallion in the light pole and an opportunity for changeable banners that would be fabric banners. So with that, happy to answer any questions, hear any comments, and I've got other materials that I can load up.
Yeah.
Hey, I'll tell you what, let's ask questions first, then I'll go to public comment, and then we can bat it around and see if we can make any decisions. So questions for Jody on her presentation?
So Jody, the north of Scott Street relationship with Glencoe, can you explain that a little bit here?
Sure.
Just what the decision-making involves between Glencoe and Winnetka?
Sure. I mean, we, we had discussions with staff, and when it came to the area to the north, you know, we knew that pedestrian safety and comfort was really important, but we wanted to make sure we understood what Glencoe's position was on this. And we bet around a bunch of ideas, but then kind of at the end, they said, we don't really know what the future is for this building, and we know that it might potentially in the future have some changes to it, and we want to leave ourselves, you know, the opportunity to be flexible to that. But their major priorities were protecting trees and pedestrian access along and across Green Bay Road.
So they left the roadwork idea to us, the stop sign at Linden?
Oh, no, I, the stop sign at Linden is also something that staff was interested in, for sure.
Glencoe staff?
Glencoe staff was. The community wasn't so thrilled about it, but again, I think, you know, that is a question that Glencoe will probably want to further discuss.
Jody, when I look at, for instance, option A, would these bump outs be basically what is in place today? Is that sort of the current state?
So...
Or are these even bigger than what we have today?
So you don't have, yeah, they'd be bigger than the bump outs that are out there today.
Okay, so I guess, oh, I would have loved to have seen the current state to get a frame of reference.
Oh, sure.
So they would be smaller?
They're smaller.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then secondly, or David, maybe David, too, do we have any information about the usage of the big parking lot behind Nino's now? Times a day, number of cars?
We don't have current counts, per se. I mean, other than anecdotal information, I mean, I've been up there on a Friday lunch hour on the upper level, and there's, I don't know, a third of the space is still available. I'm trying to think of the last time we did a parking count. It's been a while. When Town and Oak was going in, but that's before, that's before the pandemic.
We do have some commuter parking totals for that area that we could look at and bring forward. I don't have them tonight.
I mean, obviously, it's some generous parking, and I mean, I know anecdotally, it's just not used the way we would like it to be, so...
Yeah.
My question goes back to the parking lot. The two-way traffic that is in option three, does that anticipate cars going in and out from the horseshoe? Or just pedestrians?
So those red arrows would represent cars?
No, I mean going into the parking garage. So the cars would, do they now?
No. Yes.
They do. You can, from the horseshoe, you can go in there?
Cars, oh, yeah.
Option one is the current circuit.
So you can enter the parking garage from the horseshoe? I never knew that. I've always entered from the street north.
And you know, there was a lot of discussion about that, and I didn't mention it, but one of the things that we were recommending was also just additional signage to let people know that there is a parking garage there. It's 220 spaces, but definitely not utilized as best it can be.
So even without the two-way, cars can still go in there?
Oh, absolutely.
We could just put a sign that says you can go in here?
Yeah, and like, as you probably know, you know, if you're in the parking lot at Walgreens, you are forced to come out that way, so that means that we're getting autos, delivery trucks, lots of autos are using that route, which I think complicates the Merrill Street intersection.
Some good thoughts I thought in this. Just trying to give the knowledge we've learned, and I'm trying to understand a couple of things from what you've learned from the last work that's been done in this business district up here in Winnetka. The narrowing of the street, if I've gotten negative feedback from people I meet on the street, it is a narrowing of, I guess it's Lincoln next to Hometown. Try backing out there. I know it was just inches, but it is, it is a, it's a bit of a circus just backing out, so I'm not really for narrowing that street anymore, especially when you have parallel parking, because it's going to, if you narrow that street anymore, you're going to be getting out of your car in parallel parking closer to traffic. That concerns me a lot more than getting six inches on the sidewalk. So the narrowing of the street really concerns me, so I'd want you to think about that. The bump outs, I've had three people who have lost tires on bump outs, because it's harder to parallel park on a bump, on a, when you pull in, that's one thing, but if you're parallel, if you're at that spot right by the bump out, it's hard to see where, how far it bumps out. And so I'm not a big fan of that. Yeah, you're losing parking spaces, and especially, it's a, Green Bay is, I think, a very different animal than our business district up here, and you have to make quicker decisions because you're getting out into more, into traffic. I think if you want to slow traffic, I'd even consider taking the speed limit down to 20 miles an hour, just in general. It's a three, you know, people can chill out for three blocks, but I like the idea of the pink, of the roadways, that you mark them so people are visually tuned in, the drivers are, so I just want to make sure that we, those are the kind of the key things that I came up, especially when you have high-traffic areas with bump outs, where you have high-traffic where Hune is going to be, you're going to have people going in and out of there fairly quickly. I think that, I'm just trying to be realistic to what, what's the difference between that district and Winnetka.
And I'll just, just real quick, thank you for mentioning that. So there was a memo somewhere in here that looked at, you know, potentially working with IDOT to see if six inches could be taken out of the road to make a wider sidewalk, and we don't even know if that would be permitted by a traffic study, but I hear you and appreciate the comment.
I just don't want pedestrians getting out of their car closer to traffic.
Of course, yeah.
It's a problem to me.
And then, I guess the other thing I'd mention is that the bump outs at the corners are not places that we can park, so if we got rid of the bump outs, it would really just be a striped pavement. It's not enough space for a parked car because it has to maintain a certain distance from the intersection, so just something to think about. We wouldn't gain parking from losing a bump out.
And it is interesting, three to one, we heard from residents that they preferred the bump outs going into Green Bay Road to help pedestrians, to help pedestrians cross Green Bay Road.
Well, I think, I guess I'd look at this handling, I would potentially lower the whole speed limit on that street, just in general. I've seen it done in other...
I agree.
Other residential areas, and they just say, everyone's got to slow down, and I think that's good. The other thing is, I would, I have to, I can't say this without talking about signage. I just, you know, some discretion on signs going forward. I mean, I agree, I mean, a sign out in front of city halls, that was like my tipping point, that says, "City Hall's right here, parking lot, here's the parking lot." We have signs for everything now in this village, so I just want to use some discretion on how many more signs we spend money on and pay for.
Thank you.
To trusty Apitos' point, I'm, now I'm a little unclear on the width of the road and so on. When I look at option A, IDOT, and option B, village-controlled, down at the bottom, it looks like it's the same.
Yeah, there was a, there was an internal discussion about, maybe after a traffic study, there might be a consideration to narrow the road, but if so, only by inches. So we're not proposing that at this time, but you're absolutely right. The roadway is proposed in these concepts to stay exactly as it is today as far as width.
The difference would be, as you pointed out, at that intersection by the ice cream store and so on, that you could have someone turning left, someone goes around on the right side, you can't do that anymore.
Yes.
That right lane is gone, so you're, you know...
That's correct, so, yeah.
It's not actually, the parking is not closer to the...
It would be if they narrowed the roads.
But they're not proposing that.
I was in there, I just want to make sure before it goes, my point of view on that.
One thing we heard from the community was that they wanted different opportunities for outdoor dining on the sidewalk, and the thing we heard frequently from people was the limited area in front of Town and Oak, and was there any way we could widen the sidewalks to create more space? So we looked, and that's why we looked at, is it possible to add six inches? But you have the other issues, too, in terms of you have to weigh what that does in terms of maneuvering in and out of those parking spaces. But we didn't think we could go any more than six inches, and, you know, we gained a few inches on Elm Street, which really changed the experience, not Elm Street, Chestnut, which changed the experience along Chestnut. You know, wasn't, we weren't adding two or three feet, I can't remember, was it nine inches?
Six inches each side, or was it nine?
It was nine, yeah.
And it just changes the experience, but we also under, that's why we were looking at that, because we heard that as a comment.
If I could just raise one, just one point for consideration, whether we JT this section of road or not, the type of traffic that goes through there will be the same. So you still have truck traffic, it's still a truck-traffic route. It's not the same as Lincoln, which is, yes, there's trucks, but it's not the same. You have more delivery trucks that access through there, we have larger vehicles, because it is a state route. So if we JT it, we can modify it, but you can't completely cut off accessibility for traffic, so we just need to keep that in mind.
And that's why I just mentioned lowering the speed limit. I'd lower the speed to 15 for trucks, because they fly through there.
Yeah, I'm just pointing that out, because we'll have to consider that when they do the traffic study.
I'm curious if, and this is Tower and Green Bay, because I was at the chamber this morning, and a couple of the business owners, or at least one business owner referenced that being able to cross the street, I think, on the south side of Tower, I think that's where the issue was, because, you know, how traffic right now with the free right just whips around.
Yeah.
Is that something, you know, and of course, you've got Adams Driving School right there, I mean, Hubbard Woods is so intensive kids, you know.
Yeah.
I'm curious, have you thought about it? Is there some opportunity? Is there some opportunity to make that intersection safer regardless of a jurisdictional transfer?
So both, it's a great question. And I mean, I, I live nearby, so I, in Ravigna, so I'm.
I do too.
Yeah, so I'm, I drive this all the time. But both Tower Road and Green Bay Road are controlled by IDOT. And so right now, they are designed to meet those standards. Tower Road, if you're, you know, is, is, is a very complicated set of intersections. It's not even one intersection, it's two intersections, right? And so, and Tower Road has the designated right turn lane, it's got, you know, through lane, and it's got access to the parking lot and the Zangler cleaners. So there's a lot of traffic movements flying around in all sorts of directions. And then pedestrians are like the last to be thought of, right? So this is something that certainly requires a traffic study. I mean, I can come up with some guesses as a landscape architect as to, you know, what causes cars to slow down. But ultimately, it does have to work for the larger traffic network. And so that's where a traffic study is gonna be required.
Okay, so right now, because this is a big conceptual plan, there's not really, I guess, one of the things the chamber wanted to make sure I was giving that feedback.
Yeah.
But like Zanglers, you can come in and out kind of in this broad swath. And it looks like, is this maybe proposing a, a single curb cut there? Whereas right now, I think you can kind of come in a huge area, I'm not sure.
I think, so as far as curb cuts go, we're not proposing anything different.
Okay.
We're really just proposing further defining the pedestrian movement areas with decorative crosswalks and accent corners. And, you know, as you know, we have no space for Parkway trees, unfortunately, so so we're, we're out of space at that point. And so that's where having a traffic study would allow us to hopefully find space for those things and for wider, safer pedestrian routes.
And I appreciate you telling me that there's public parking spaces at that Tower Court. I had no idea. They're at that corner almost every day. So thank you.
You know, I think one of the questions on the survey, if I recall, sort of got at some bicycle traffic. How, in terms of both just casual biking, kids and adults biking into town, and groups of, you know, Sunday morning cyclists looking for a route? I know most of the time they go up Sheridan, but.
Yeah.
But still, any, I know that there's nothing in writing here, but any thoughts on how that might change or be integrated into this plan?
So, you know, we have the, the bike trail, of course, on the east side, the Green Bay Bike Trail. And we know that the village has, I think, just recently completed the study for the trail. We, of course, would want to find ways through signage and other things to invite people to, you know, move between the trail and the downtown business district or the Hubbard Woods District. As far as designating a separate path or a facility for bikers, unfortunately, we just don't have the space to do that here. We would lose lanes of parking in order to accommodate something like that. At the same time, state of Illinois, bikers are permitted to ride on the roads. And so, you know, I, I think that just making sure that we slow traffic down as best as possible so that all the users are comfortable enough to use the road is the best that we can offer.
Okay, and this might be drilling down farther ahead, but.
Yeah, sure.
Would we envision more bike racks so that we'd encourage people to bike into town? And like for casual shopping and dinner and things like that?
Sure, I mean, we've had lots of conversations about bike racks with the Elm Street Business District. You know, it's interesting with bike, with biking, there are, I kind of group the types of bikers into three categories. There's the, the, the big packs that will never lock up their bike because their bikes probably cost more than my car. And they usually will just lean it up against a storefront so they can keep an eye on it. And then there's, you know, more casual bikers like me, who probably would use a bike rack. And then there's kids who also are, I guess, half and half. But, you know, you get the casual bikers, the parents with kids, and then you get the, the high-speed guys that, you know, will go on the street. And so what we found, at least, you know, Steph and I have kind of kept an eye on bike rack usage, just anecdotally, in the Elm Street District. And doesn't always get used the way we intended it.
And we've added scooters now too.
Right, right. Yeah, so it's, it's, there's not a lot of space to accommodate a lot of people and a lot of uses. And so that's where, you know, we kind of have to, you know, try and place value on the things that we like the most so that we don't end up with some watered-down version.
Right.
Of a street.
That's a great point.
Just anecdotally, I think the pelotons of the big packs go up Old Green Bay Road. They don't.
I know.
Yeah.
Well, and the one thing about Hubbard Woods in general is that you aren't allowed to burst Sheridan Road through that section because that's where the ravines are.
Oh, that's right.
So they have to jump off and either go Old Green Bay Road. But I've noticed that a lot of the bigger packs prefer Green Bay Road to Old Green Bay Road.
Just recently, which they own, I understand.
Yeah.
That's interesting.
I don't get it either, so.
Maybe it's the coffee shops. They're chasing, they're chasing Town and Oak, maybe.
So, well, why don't we open this up for some public, oh, I'm sorry, Kurt.
Jody, on this slide with Tower and Green Bay, have you considered at all accessibility? Let's say folks that are pedestrians that are mobility impaired?
Sure, so for sure, all of the curb ramps have got to be handicapped accessible, which I don't think all of them are today. And when you work to make those things accessible, oftentimes it means reconstructing more of the streetscape to provide the slopes that you need in order to make it a safe passageway. Other things that can be done with the signalization are things like the audio countdown timers, the audio timers and the visual, visual countdown timers to enhance that. There are other things that have been done with signage and lighting to, you know, just make it a, a more kind of prominent, obvious intersection that can be done as well.
I have, I have some commentary on that, but I'll save it for the discussion part. And also on this slide, with the entrances, whether it's to the cleaners, Adams, the gas station, have we thought about what is our ability as a public body to adjust where those entrances could be to improve the pedestrian safety or just pedestrian safety or just general circulation?
So, for sure. I mean, I, you know, it's, it's always a sensitive topic to take out somebody's access or, you know, shift it around. If that were to be redeveloped in the future, I think those are always also great opportunities to kind of make sure that the public and the private go hand in hand. For the time being, because we didn't anticipate that there were any changes to their circulation, we've shown what's there today. But, you know, getting access away from the intersection is always a much safer way to go, for sure.
In part of the thinking through just the concepts on the design, did you evaluate if there's any possibility of putting in any landscape medians on Tower?
Landscape medians on Tower?
Correct.
Since it's controlled by IDOT and since we don't have a lot of space to work with.
Tower's not controlled by IDOT, we own, we own Tower.
Oh, you own, you own Tower?
Yep.
Okay, we did not.
The section of Green Bay Road that comes down, goes through the bend and then goes south, that's all IDOT.
Oh, gotcha, thank you. Yeah.
So, so the part that says Tower Road.
Yeah.
Is that Village or is that IDOT?
It's IDOT.
Okay, IDOT. So, so IDOT does have that one piece of Tower, essentially where the two are combined?
Yeah.
That's correct.
Got it. Okay. Do you mind just going up to the Gage intersection?
Sure.
So I know as the, whatever, the liaison as a part of this project, I brought this up when we had our kickoff, but and I know we'll do a traffic study, but has there been any further thought or discussion on the necessity of the signaled intersection at Gage?
Oh, whether that signal is needed?
Is, is it necessary? I mean, if we're adding a stop sign at Merrill, and if we're, you know, if it is thinking through, let's say, the option two of a pedestrian-focused environment. I mean, I'll be biased and I'll be explicit about in the discussion, but just was that, was there any further discussion on, on that intersection?
So we know just historically that the, the reason for the, that for the signalized intersection at Gage Street was to serve a school that's to the west. And so unless we have a more, a specific traffic study, we wouldn't really be in a position to propose a change until we go through that traffic study.
Okay. And then on the horseshoe options, you had commented a couple of times. What was the, could you rank in terms of what the public feedback was in terms of the preferences when they put the stickers up or the surveys?
Sure, I mean, I can tell you that option one was ranked the highest. Between option two and three, I, I couldn't, I couldn't say, I'd have to kind of go through to verify it, but.
How much is because it's what people are familiar with?
Yeah. From a planner's standpoint, with improving access not just to, but also from the lower level of the parking garage, which of these three do you feel is the most ideal?
I mean, I, they, I think they all, they all have pros and cons. They all have some merits, but then they all have, you know, the, the things that make them not as desirable. I think for me, dealing with all of the traffic that comes out of the Tower Court area, all the trucks, and thinking about Merrill and how difficult that is, it's like we're sending them all the way to the north. And so, and so it seemed like there was some logic in trying to get them to spit out to Green Bay Road faster, which would be two and three. But those are significant changes to the circulation, which I think really, looking at it from a traffic study standpoint, I think would help shine some light. So I know I'm not really answering the question as far as what I think would be better, but I think it needs more study.
Okay.
I would agree with Jody. If, if you were to ask, just from an engineering perspective, option two is what I had a preference to. And the only reason is because it reduces certain cross lane movements. So with that intersection at, at, at Merrill and Green Bay, if you make it one way, the only movement you have is a right turn lane, you only have one cross lane, and then somebody coming straight across. And so, and it directs everybody. But now if it's a stop sign, it, it controls that, it controls that movement. And it sends people directly to the parking garage, which is where you're trying to send two people first. That's your first option, that's your parking garage. And then it sends the traffic down and around to where the stores are at, where there's parking. So if you just want to visit the park, you can find your parking for the park, and then it's around to the businesses. The one thing that, that we hear from a lot of people is that it's getting out the pedestrian movements and the vehicles getting out. You want to have it as part of a controlled intersection, so the traffic signal, if, if it still meets warrants at Gage, provides that level of control. It allows for a, a flow of traffic coming out. It controls how the pedestrians move at that corner, and it controls the traffic going to the school as well. As Jody noted though too, what we would look at as part of the traffic study would be is, what's the largest vehicle that goes down Tower Court? And how do we, can it make the left turn to get to the traffic signal? So you're not sending it past the park, past the train station, by the park, over to the restaurant, and then trying to make a big swing move at a stop sign intersection. It, it gets a little tight.
From a safety standpoint, I'd just be, because my grandkids play in that park and there's kids darting in and out, they're zipping across to the deli. I, I just, you know, if that's where the, the traffic backup's gonna be, if you send in an option two, you're gonna, I think more tra, I just don't know. More traffic sitting there waiting to, to leave versus they kind of come and zip into the park spaces. I'm just to know what's gonna create more traffic? Will that create a lot more traffic at that spot?
And this is where, and this is where the traffic study would, would talk about that. What, what's the daily flow that's coming in? As, as noted, it would be a change.
Yeah.
For how people are coming, but it's just how you're managing that traffic and how are you controlling people getting out? The biggest concern we heard about Merrill and Green Bay was, one, it's uncontrolled, but two, it's, it's a little chaotic. And even if it's a stop sign, people are, are kind of guessing. So at least if you're controlling it at a light, pedestrians know I can't go unless the light's flashing, that the, if it's green, I can go. It's a little bit safer, and especially for moving delivery vehicles and stuff out. From an engineering perspective, to me, it seems safer. But again, as Jody alluded to, the traffic study as part of the phase one report that we need to do would help kind of highlight a little bit what they find.
And I will add too, that it seems like if that were the, the desired traffic movement and we were sending more cars and trucks westbound on Gage, I would think that the traffic signal timing would be timed to account for that. I mean, I think we can control not only the geometry, but we can control the programming of the timing.
Yeah, and if we do JT this section of Green Bay Road to the, we control that. So we can set what that is, and we can set it at certain times. When do, when do deliveries come? When is it mostly north-south traffic? We can control that and tweak it a little bit as needed.
Yeah.
And hand in hand with the horseshoe and access for vehicles to and from the parking, have you and the team taken in consideration pedestrian access to and from the parking garage? Both upper level and lower level, and then access between the levels?
So we have not looked at the parking garage structure. We've been focused on the spaces just outside of the parking garage. So, and how to get people more readily into the garage. It really is designed in such a way that, as you know, it's, it's diminutive. It's, it's tucked back, it's not very obvious. But we want to make sure that people know that it's there. And so we've looked at things like enhancing signage at the canopy, adding signage. You know, we've got, we've got space on the east side of Tower Court for landscaping and signage to really call attention to it. So when you're on Green Bay Road, you would notice that it's there. And so I think is, as much as we want to, you know, try and dial back or, you know, not be too overt with signage, I think we can't be overt enough when it comes to the parking garage.
Could make it look a little less scary, because sometimes it looks like.
Yeah, that's it, that's it.
Yeah, I mean, I drive a low car and I feel like I do this when I kind of drive in there.
Well, it's just never, sometimes it's not that clean. It's just, you can, we can do something to enhance it. I don't think, I mean, unless you're not from Winnetka, I think pretty much most Winnetka residents realize that parking garage is there. You just don't want to use it. I think we make it, make it more friendly and enhance.
For sure.
Yeah.
For sure.
Now, I did talk to my predecessor, Steve Saunders, who said, when that was, when that was being developed, one of the biggest comments that we heard was, we want it to, we want it to be there, but we don't, we want it to be discreet.
Right.
And so that's how it got where it was.
Very discreet. So discreet.
It is.
That was, they were successful.
I told Steve, we accomplished it. One of the things that we did do recently though is we cleared some of the landscaping in front of it. There was a larger tree that screened a certain compartment, there was something that, there was a part in the front. So we went through there, Andrew, the village forester, went through and he cleared a lot of that. And we're gonna kind of clean it up as part of it. So now it's a little bit more visible, so people can see it a little bit better.
And we're also finalizing interim signage that would be placed on the front of the garage as well as some typical type signs that direct you to the parking. I'd hope those to be rolled out soon, just to give it a little more attention and call it out to drivers that are looking for a place to park.
I have one last question. It's maybe adding to Trustee Dearborn's question about Glencoe's involvement. So what is their, repeating exactly what you said, I'm not exactly sure. How is Glencoe involved in the decision-making of this, their portion of the design? And what is our influence on the Glencoe portion of the design? And then how, I mean, like, is, do we have a design like reconciliation if we have differing opinions about standards? Or will we evaluate like, here's the, you know, you cross the border and then the, it goes to all brick sidewalks from, you know, our standard? Or tree grates are different? I mean, has there been any thought about how that's gonna work out?
We don't have the same relationship yet with Glencoe that we do with Kennelworth. So a lot of the conversations with Kennelworth have been really positive because they've been additive for both of us. And we both are sharing a very similar vision for, at least we know what we don't want. And I know Rob doesn't like this, but Glencoe's been, been a little sticky from the elected officials' position. And they do have a different village president now that could open up some conversations. We talked really briefly a couple of weeks ago. But my feeling is Winnetka's Winnetka's, Glencoe's Glencoe. We can, we can shake hands and figure something out, great. But I don't think we're in any position, especially with the investment we have here, to compromise anything that would be for the positive impact of Winnetka for the sake of Glencoe.
Wasn't this just for planning efficiency? Like if we were gonna plan this, why not loop them into the discussion? I mean, it's not binding or anything, right? I mean, right?
Early discussions with their staff and village manager was, it made sense to have a consistent design since it looks to someone who doesn't live here like it's one district. But their feedback was, we're not quite sure how this is gonna come about and we'll just have to see how our timelines actually align. But I think they would like to see it be consistent as well, but still have some distinguishing features that are Glencoe. I mean, they're, like, their entry signage is obviously gonna be different than ours.
Yeah, a hundred percent agree. And I feel like just the conversations we've had with them is, you know, like if you look at the Scott Avenue intersection, you know, some of it's on Winnetka's property, some of it's on Glencoe's property, and everyone agrees that it should look like one intersection. And Hubbard Woods should look like one district. But I think that, you know, because, because nobody yet knows the future of the Hubbard Woods Plaza building and parking, it was too preliminary for anybody to really hone in on exactly where the sidewalk will go, exactly where trees would go. And so it was sort of more a placeholder for future.
You know, one, one thing that influential wise would be when we do that phase one report, sorry, when we.
You know, one thing that influential wise would be when we do that Phase One report, sorry, when we, when we do the Phase One report, that information can include that intersection up. It's not, it's not a lot. And so if the report says, this is the movements that we see, and we recommend that something be placed, that would, that could be a, a base map in which to have conversations if, if we have thoughts different. But to President Rint's point, it's outside for us.
We all need to remember that it wasn't so long ago that they were seriously considering placing a cannabis shop that would fundamentally face south into Winnetka. So there still is a trust issue here. It doesn't mean we can't overcome it, but, you know, we have had issues over the past with that particular stretch of roadway and what should and shouldn't go there. So we just have to be cognizant that, yeah, we can go down there and be really Pollyanna about the whole thing, but, you know, also know that, yeah, I didn't.
But, and David has submitted comments to their planning for that plaza as well that would complement our side of the streets.
Yeah, I mean, you guys, you guys are friends. I mean, but, but there is this other piece that we've all been navigating that has made things a little bit trickier. Are you done, Kirk?
I'm done, thank you.
Let's go to public comment. Come on up. We're all going to get a chance to bite at the apple here.
I just have to carry it on, and I live in Hubbard Woods probably for longer than some of you have been alive, but who knows? Anyway, I have three points. One is with the, in the, including in the traffic plan, there is, and I don't know what it is. Is it an alley or a road that went, is just west of, or east of, you know, when you make the horseshoe and you start going west on Tower, before you get to the gas station, you can make a right turn, and it's sort of like, you know, it, it comes into where the people are exiting the Walgreens, and then you can keep going on to the train station. So whose is that?
Tower Court.
So it's called Tower Court, but before you get to it on your diagrams, there's a whole, you know, area going to Tower Road. And so it's an access. Either it's an alley, an access, it's trucks, or whatever. Is that part of IDOT, is that ours, or?
That's controlled by the village.
The village. So that could be an option for something. I mean, certainly for delivery, for trucks, if we own that or taking a traffic pattern going west on Tower before it even gets to Green Bay. So it's just a question if you're, you know, or, you know, when you're looking at your traffic flow.
Yeah, you're talking about, so you're talking about Tower Court, oh, sorry.
I'm talking about before, I mean, the way you have your diagram, you have Tower Court, you know, starting already, you know, to the north of Tower. But before you even, you know, as you round, you know, as you're going west on Tower, coming from Green Bay, probably parallel to, right before you get to the gas station. You can make a right turn, and you can access, like, back road.
This, back here?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Which can take, right, people do it, and you can get to the train station, you can drop people off, but you can also use that as a roadway if it's ours. So there's certain options that you could do with that.
That's true. It's, it has parking on both sides of the street, and you're absolutely right. It's got access and continuous roadway slash alley through here.
Okay, then the other question I have, I guess, in your surveys or public meetings, some of the language you use is, the community said, the residents said, the people said. So do you know who says what? You know, is that one of the, you know, the Town and Oak thing? You know, when people are making comments, are they identified whether they are residents? If they're community people, or if they have, are business people? And does that take into account who's making a comment about what? Because I would assume that, you know, a resident may care about one thing, but a business owner may care about something else, and certain community people who have, you know, interests. So can that be, I guess, identified so that you, at least when you're making decisions, can prioritize? And my other comment would be, and you don't have to, you know, comment to my comments, the train station, which I don't know if that fits into a streetscape, but that is an entry point to our community, and it is pretty awful, especially Hubbard Woods. So if you're going to be talking to PACE about changing bus stops, talk to Metro or whoever about the entrance to our community.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
I used to be the Glencoe Newspaper Agency, back in the day.
Come on up.
Hello, folks. I'm Glenn Deutsch. I own Minos. Sorry about that. And we've been, we've been there for seven years and bring about 55,000, over 55,000 people there a year. And I think we have a very unique perspective as to how people use, certainly what's being called the horseshoe, the parking garage, and, and all of that. I think one of our main concerns is to be heard and not necessarily be lumped in with, with all other comments like she's mentioning, because A, we're, we, we built a business there which I think the community really wanted, and certainly the community is really using. And we, we have concerns about some of the things that, that we see. And I don't feel like we've had a voice in any of this. So I think this is not a discussion. I know this is, I say something and I sit down. I think, I'd like to have a moment where we can sit down and talk about what, what works for us, what we see on a regular, on daily basis, how we use the, the, the traffic and the parking and everything else. And I know, I'm sure Cynthia has many of the main, common concerns with her space.
Glenn?
Yes.
I think it'd be really helpful if you told us what you liked and what you didn't like now.
Well, we could, well, but again.
Instead of doing it in a, in a conference room where maybe one or two of us are able to attend. I mean, this is a public meeting, and we want to hear what you have to say.
Absolutely. I think, I think one of, if we can go to the horseshoe options. I have not fully for ourselves, but for all the businesses that surround that horseshoe, grave concerns about changing the traffic pattern to the other direction. I look at everything funneling out on Gage being a, a big problem, potential problem. If you think about having a stoplight there, and every piece of traffic having to, to come out where there's, you know, anywhere from, you know, 15 to 20, I don't know how many parking spaces are left on there, you know, trying to move in and out of parking spots, as well as trucks and traffic coming out of Walgreens. How is a truck going to make that left-hand turn, you know, with cars parked and everything else? And if it's a stoplight, forget it. There's going to be, there's going to be cars backed up into the alley. There's going to be cars backed up coming around that turn. And there's going to be cars trying to come in and out of those parking spaces, and I think it looks like a potential nightmare. For ourselves personally, if we change the traffic pattern and we give up, it looks like they're trying to put parking spaces along the north side of Merrill there, we lose our carryout business. And we, that is something we desperately do not want to lose. It certainly has gotten us through some very, very difficult times. But it's also what the community knows they can come up. They're going to get a local high school kid that comes out of the carryout area and brings their bags or pizza boxes, or whatever it happens to be, and, and hands it right through their window. And, and on they go. And it's a, it's a big benefit to, to the customers as well as ourselves to be able to continue to do that. So that's a concern. In, in all of these, in all of these plans, like we were talking about, the parking garage isn't discussed. And it is a hellhole. So it, it obviously needs to be addressed and needs to be something that is beautified like we're talking about with, with the rest of what's happening.
Hellhole functionality-wise, or just looks?
Looks for one. And, and it's, it's very off-putting. It's, if it rains, it is, it's a sieve. And I have, I've had employees who've had their hoods have rust damage from the pipes that drip. It's leaky, it's dark, it's damp, and not well lit. And I can see why people don't want to go there, for sure. I think there are probably ways that that can be addressed with, with, you know, better lighting, better signage, like you said, better entryway. I think, again, if, if traffic is, stays on the, on the pattern that it is right now going around the park, you, you, your car, everybody that exits that area is facing the parking garage. You can't, if it's, if it's better presented, if it's better lit, if it's better signed, you will drive more people there. You have, and I know parking is always a concern and always an issue. You will, you will bring people in there, and they will use that parking lot. It is predominantly, for the most part, it's, it's empty. We, you know, do we fill it all the way up on a, on a Friday night or a Saturday night? Hmm, close to it. You know, I don't know what's going on on the second floor. Because let's face it, one of the, one of the things that I think handicapped the businesses in Hubbard Woods is all the parallel parking. And like you said, it's very difficult, and I think a lot of people are reluctant to, to park in, in parallel parking when they've got traffic around them and waiting for them. They may not be buzzing by them, but they're sitting there waiting, and it's like, oh, God, I'm being judged on how I get into this parking spot. And it's, and it's, it's, people don't want to do it. And I think, as we talk about, I think slowing down traffic is, is good. I think if we, if, we've all experienced what it's like to drive down Green Bay Road in Womet. It's a, a traffic light every, every block, and it, it's a deterrent. And I think what we're trying to do is things that don't deter people from using Hubbard Woods and going to the businesses. And I think it's really important that we look at, you know, how people behave. People, listen, people are going to, everyone's going to want to be safe. And community members are going to put post-it notes on, and that's what they want to do. And I'm all for all of that. But I think we also have to consider, what are we, how are we, what are our plans? And are they choking the businesses as opposed to helping vitalize the businesses that are in that, that area? So that's kind of it in a nutshell.
Great.
So, and, and again, I'm happy anytime to talk about these things. I would have hoped that the businesses would have been one of the, some of the groups would have talked to us about this as they were being developed. Because we're the ones that live there, work there, make our living there, and, and welcome the community there on a, on a daily basis.
I think the businesses were invited to the open houses, so.
I was there. But that's, that's after plans are done, and that's putting post-it notes on a thing. That's not a discussion. You know, that wasn't the opportunity for us to.
Well, that's kind of what a charrette is. I mean, I mean, I know you're not from, but, but that's the process that is typically done.
Again, if the village is going and hiring consultants, which, you know, I'm sure is costing the village money, well, shouldn't, shouldn't part of that be knocking on some doors of, of, of the people that, that work and, and run their businesses in this area to find out, what do you, what, what works? What do you see? How are people reacting? Are people using this? Are people going by too fast? Are they able to park here? I think there's a lot of things that we can contribute.
One question, 30-second answer. Notwithstanding the parking for your carryout, between the one-way and the two-way on Merrill.
One-way.
Still one-way.
Yeah. I mean, let's face it, two-way is going to be more chaos. There's no question about it.
What?
And I think, I don't have any problem, you know, you know, whether it's a stoplight or a stop sign or something. Again, we want to talk about how we're slowing, you know, traffic coming through, but I'm all for the safety of it. Right now, yes, the visibility is tough. If you pull out on the Merrill and, you know, between the, the planter box and, and a car or a truck that's there, you can't see. So those things are, are difficult.
And the restaurant there has this big fence around their dining area that's kind of hard to see around sometimes, too.
We go?
So you would be, you would be in favor of the stop, four-way stop at Merrill?
Yeah. I mean, you know, and I've seen, you know, are there, are there, you know, again, a lot of it is, is pedestrian concern about crossing the streets there?
It's bad.
So is that one of those where, well, you know, the light remains green unless someone is there and presses a button, and you can, and, and you can stop the traffic? I'm not sure what solutions are, are the best.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I'm all for whatever is safe. I think, like I said, two-way, I think, is going to become a lot more chaotic. Let's face it, we're still, it's, we're still driving people into the garage on the existing pattern, so.
Thanks, Glenn.
Okay? Thank you.
I feel like I should also, I didn't say this earlier. The plans that we're looking at tonight are exactly the same things that we looked at at the public meeting.
I understand, absolutely.
Yeah, and, and definitely appreciated your comments at the public meeting and tonight, and, you know, certainly we'll take them moving forward, but.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's our, it's our home.
Of course.
You know what I mean? So we, we definitely want to be a part of it.
Yeah, for sure.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Cynthia Burr. I am the owner of Vivid Art Gallery and also a member of the Hubbard Woods Design District Board. I would like to just say that I agree 100% with everything that Glenn just said. I think that what he's trying to say is that we would have liked if had a place at the table in the early stages of this, as opposed to being asked whether we prefer tree grade one or tree grade two, this garbage can or this garbage can. Those are not really the issues that concern us. We're more interested in the bigger issues, some of which you've heard from us about in a couple of letters that we've sent out in the last year. I think that our biggest concerns are pedestrian safety, parking, lighting, holiday decor. And particularly with parking, was we've talked so much about, we have parking structures, we have public parking available, but nobody knows it's there. Or it's a scary place and nobody wants to go into it. We've been asking for years for signage to say there's free parking, and I was delighted to hear from this gentleman over here that that's coming. So that's great. You know, with the parking garage, in addition to fixing it up, maybe we could do something wild, like, you know, paint murals on it or something, and make it actually not something to hide, but something to publicize and say, whoa, this is this cool area. There's this structure, I want to go see it because it's so beautiful. Just a thought. The other thing that I think is of concern to all of us who work in the district is that we really, really hope that you will decide to do the jurisdictional transfer. We're just really concerned about the things that we live with on a daily basis that we don't think are going to get fixed with IDOT, and that we think the village could fix. I mean, we live with horrible sidewalks and terrible lighting, and et cetera, et cetera. And we, we need to have those fixed. We have some beautiful shops, and we're in kind of a crummy area, to be honest, honest with you. We kind of feel like we're the neglected stepchild of Winnetka, and we would like to be recognized as full children. The other thing is that because, whether we do a jurisdictional transfer or not, this is going to take a lot of time. And we have all these issues that we would love to see addressed in some way in the interim. So if it's four or five years down the road, that's a long time to have to live with some of these issues. And I've been living with them in my business for the last seven years, and have been talking to the village about them for seven years. So like, 12 years seems like a really long time to wait to get some of these things done. So would love to have a conversation with somebody that says, instead of saying, no, we can't do any of these things, to say, let's talk about maybe how we can do some interim things. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Cynthia. Just so you know, there's, I think there's some awesome comments there and some really great ideas, but this is the beginning.
Yeah.
You are here, we're, this is the first time Village Council has seen it. This is the start. So you guys are here at exactly the right time, and we hope to see you every time we're talking about this going forward, too.
Can I ask Chris, I mean, and Rob Behan, jurisdictional transfer doesn't mean any, we can still fix the sidewalks, but they're not, yeah. I mean, that's going to be fixed, anyway.
But we need, but we need an intergovernmental agreement to fix the sidewalks.
There, there are certain limitations.
Something like that.
Or they have to disagree to do it, if we don't do the jurisdictional.
Oh, they won't do it.
Yeah, there's certain limitations. Trustee Apitoff, there's certain limitations we have to live with, with IDOT.
Okay.
But there's also the return on the investment. Like, how, how many interim things can you do with their concurrence? And, you know, or do you wait for the, the main investment? I do think that signage and some of the sprucing up, particularly the parking garage, is something we could work on sooner rather than later. That, that parking garage had been rehabbed, gee, 10-plus years ago, but it didn't stick, especially the membrane on the top. That's what allowed, it, it didn't stay, and it, and it leaked. So there was activated lighting, that was LED lighting that was added at the lower levels. So when you drive in, it turns on. You know, can that be enhanced even further? But, you know, painting it and making it more attractive and making it structural. I mean, structurally, it's sound, I believe, but just reduce the leakage and make it more functional is something we could certainly do in the interim.
Cameras, if you want.
Sure. Sure, yeah.
Hi, Tom Brown, Hampton Dale, Where the Woodships Flow.
No longer.
You guys, no, it's still flowing. You guys are preempted. My great lines are gone, but I want to sound one theme, and it's really kind of a macro theme. Hubbard Woods, and this is ambient noise from the neighborhood, Hubbard Woods feels like, in all appearances, is the stepchild, the neglected stepchild of Wenetka. You look at the train stations for one-star contrast. You look at our downtown for one-star contrast. Now, I know you're conscientiously moving toward getting us the same things that Wenetka has, but ambient noise about foot dragging, about not moving quickly enough, and maybe over time, maybe Hubbard Woods will forget about, I would urge you to do what traffic studies you need, and I concur. That horseshoe, lots of things can be made, a lot of good comments can be made tonight. I'd like to add my own about my grandchildren. We disagree on where the kids are at risk, but do your traffic study, but don't waste time delaying to get to the damn thing. Do it, do it expeditiously, as a public relations maneuver, if nothing else. Help assure Hubbard Woods, or every bit as part of this community, is Wenetka. We need that attention. And if you can do anything about the train station, Rob, that would be greatly appreciated.
We, we try frequently.
I know, I know.
Just an update for everybody, the funding is there, but there was a dispute between Metro and UP about the height of the pedestrian bridge. And unfortunately, they had to redesign it in order to raise the bridge from the original plans, and it's delayed its upgrade by about a year. So, we continue to press them. We know that their engineers have been out shooting grades and doing some plans, but it's on our continual list because, you know, the, the big sticking point for years was funding. We secured, we made sure the funding was secured through the capital bill, but now there's the final engineering to make sure the footbridge is at the proper clearance for the UP requirements.
It's unfortunate, invested so much money to make them pretty.
Yeah, but it, it'll, once it goes, it's gonna be great.
Well-
Is there a funding commitment?
I mean, commitment, okay.
Yes, there's a commitment to move forward.
So, I just, you know, because I live in Hubbard Woods, right? And, and many of us here do. I, I think it's really important for those here, as well as watching tonight, to understand how insane this delay has been, right? So, it is a commuter, and I also, for work, do a lot with railroads. So, it is a commuter-only rail line, and all of a sudden, after everything was approved, basically, UP came back and said, no, you have to design it to a freight line standard for the bridge crossing. Is that not the, essentially, what happened?
That was their initial response. They, they end up coming to a lower standard, but it was still higher than what Metro had designed.
And higher than, by the way, what we have in Elm Street. Like, this is insanity, right? Like, no train is gonna not go under Elm. And, you know, it's just, so, I just want people to understand that we're in this Orwellian situation of Metro, UP, and the fight that goes on it. We hear every day, we all hate how bad it looks, right? We know it's horrible. And hopefully, you know, our continued efforts will prevail eventually. But know that it's been very frustrating. So, I just want to make sure everybody knows.
Hello, I'm Terry Dason. I am, I've been a Hubbard Wood resident for 32 years. And I have been watching all of this going on, and I'm very concerned about moving, changing anything with this horseshoe. I can tell you that my office is by Grand Foods, and I cannot tell you how many people drive out the one-way going the wrong way. Every day. I stop and tell them, you're going the wrong way. Oh, well, I was going this way anyway. I go, I, I sometimes don't move when I have my car in the place. I just, I keep my car, and I go, you gotta go back? I make them go back and go around. So, I think that all the people that have lived here in Wenetka for this long know this is the route. Because I have been at Merrill where, where I've had people try, tried to drive in that way, too. Oh, I have, many times. Over, you know, 32 years, I have. So, I'm concerned about ever changing that. Because it would take forever. It probably would never take, you know, stick, where people would understand that that's the way it's supposed to be. So, that really concerns me. And, and I also, like, everything that Glenn had to say, I agree with what he has to say, because I have used the carryout. I have been to his restaurant. I have, I've been to every shop in, in Hubbard Woods. I've talked to the people there. I think that what his idea of you actually walking in the doors and talking to the businesses, especially the long-term businesses, and having those conversations would be very helpful. Because sometimes they're, they know that this is going on, and they're hopeful that it's gonna happen, and their, their lives just don't work. So, they need to be involved. And I do believe that, I, I know a lot of the residents were there. I, at the, at the Town in Oak, I did see a lot of people from the community, and I was really impressed with the turnout. So, let's keep this going. Thank you.
Thanks, Terry. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back up here. One thing I want everybody to think about that may be apparent, and I'm just repeating, or it may not be, the, with respect to the jurisdictional transfer, I mean, I've been thinking about this now for 10 years. And there are some things that are really attractive to it, like we can control everything and make it look as pretty as we want to, and make all the enhancements that we've been talking about or proposing. But there are some negatives, too. You know, one is the ongoing maintenance. Now, granted, we're getting a road that is being brought up to current standards, and we'll have plenty of time to build, if we need a reserve for that one little stretch of highway, enough, enough capital to take care of the ongoing things. And we'll, and we'll be maintaining something. I think all of you have been up and down Sheridan Road when they were rebuilding in Willmet, and you saw how deep they dug, and how thick the concrete was, and how much reinforcing is in there. That's what you have to expect. The bad news is, is if we do a jurisdictional transfer and negotiate for the state to rebuild the roadway to 21st century standards, it's gonna put everybody in this room out of business.
Right, it will.
And that's something to think about, too. And I've lost sleep over this, because I've been a big proponent and a believer in, in jurisdictional transfer. It will kill the businesses. Anybody who saw that construction along Sheridan understands just how invasive and how long it is to get from point A to point B. You know, I've, I've come to, and plus the fact that we do not have the sort of relationship with IDOT that we did with Cook County, with the forest preserve, with our local taxing bodies, so we can negotiate these things and do good things for the community. IDOT is an island unto themselves. They've been obstinate. I mean, I think they're still all working remote for the most part. You know, we can't even get a meeting with these people. Years of requesting meetings. And, you know, Jim's told you stories before about, well, we had signalization, it was programmed in at, at Forest Way in Willow, and they just kicked it out, never even bothered to tell us. So, we need to understand that if this jurisdictional transfer is something that's really desirable, that we have to figure out how we're gonna mitigate all of the impacts that that can bring upon that district. And, and I'm concerned that we can't. I don't know how you dig up half of a roadway, five feet down, fill it with rebar and concrete, and then pave over it, and put all the infrastructure in there, and do it in a period of time, short enough, that it's not gonna adversely impact everybody over there. So, it might be a good idea to think about, you know, tweaking a deal with them that, that has us taking control and maybe responsibility over the pedestrian ways, and letting them suck wind with the, with the roadway. And let them continue to maintain it, and maybe we throw in some dollars if we want an extra little something for the rebuild. But Glenn, I'm telling you, I don't ca-
I'm not for it.
That would be, that would be murderous.
Well, wait, wait.
Make away our summer.
Wait. Can I, I guess, I guess I want to understand, because we know we have to rebuild the roadway.
We don't. We have to replace some infrastructure.
No, we have water main issues. We have sewer issues. I mean, I just want to make sure I understand before, I mean, like, at some point-
There are infrastructure issues.
Right.
But those can be incrementally handled, I believe. And, you know, Jim, I know you're kind of on the fence on some of this stuff, too, but, you know, Tina, I mean, we would literally be closing that corridor for a year.
But I thought, and this was something we looked at at the downtown, you know, in the streetscape, was, I thought some of that stuff runs right through the middle of the road.
Water mains.
Yeah, so, I guess, and nobody is suggesting that we do a project that puts businesses out of business, right? Nobody wants to do that. We all love the vibe and everything that all you have done to create great businesses. But at some point, we have to do construction on the roadway, and we're gonna have to dig deep to do some of this infrastructure improvement. So, I guess, I want to understand this concept that, and I'm not, I, I just want to understand what would make jurisdictional transfer different in terms, because they have to go down extra feet for concrete? Like, I just want to understand what would be different about that. Because at some point, whether it's this year or 20 years from now, we're gonna have to get into that roadway, I would imagine.
To put it simply, a jurisdictional transfer is a gut rehab. Us maintaining it and, and taking, taking the pedestrian spaces is more like a remodel. So, it's just the amount of intensity of construction and how long this takes, Tina. I mean, it's, and, and look at how narrow and, and try to get two lanes of traffic through there and maintain a construction site. I'm, it's, I just don't see it happening.
I feel that that statement shills the discussion, because then it puts us into this discussion of, well, we can't do anything to make it safer for two schools.
No, not, not at all. Alls I'm saying is, is, is we may be better, instead of a jurisdictional transfer, is negotiating some sort of intergovernmental agreement that gives us control over some of the pedestrian areas and the things that are critical to us, lighting.
Well, what's critical to me, because I've been almost killed probably 14 times in the last 16 years, is a stop sign at Merrill, and they will not grant that. There will not be an IDOT person that will grant a stop sign because of the, it's too close to the, to light.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah, you're probably right.
I mean, I think we need to think about those issues. And maybe that's where we end up.
And that could be a source of, a point of negotiation as well. I mean, I just know that if we go full JT, like we've seen done in other areas, it's, it's going to be very, very, very difficult for our businesses to handle it.
And the only other thing I would, I ask, and we can talk about whether we like the plans or not, and maybe the jurisdictional transfer, you know, never even happens because IDOT's not open to it. I would say that my kids have almost been killed at the four-way stop at Tower and whatever that is, near Hubbard Woods School. So, my concern about taking a light out at Gage, for instance, which would probably increase the chances of you getting a stop sign at Merrill, from a warrant standpoint, would be very dangerous.
Yeah, I agree.
Because people just, at Tower, near Hubbard Woods, just, if, if there wasn't a police safety officer there almost constantly, people just plow through that. So, anyway.
I've seen it.
Can we put- So, I, but I, I just wanted to leave that with you, because I'm not saying that it's impossible. Alls I'm saying is that a full-blown jurisdictional transfers, as those we've seen surrounding us, is a pretty intense operation.
I like the idea of splitting, splitting the, the-
Maybe we can, but we don't even know if we can do that, but we gotta get them to the table.
And can we, if, if it's not a stop sign at, at Merrill's spot, can we put other lights up there? Can we do everything short to say that somebody can push it and the lights go?
Yeah, Evanston has those things going everywhere where people stop. If it's, I know, it drives me crazy. You know what I'm talking about?
Waving the flag?
The little-
Go on, let's get moving.
Yeah. I know, not everybody pays attention to those, but I don't know, is that something IDOT allows? Back when IDOT communicated, typically no, on their properties. Unless the village signs off and assumes all the liability, then you're taking liability for a road you don't own and an intersection you don't control. So, to Chris's point, full-blown jurisdictional transfer means they rebuild the road, you know, it's full-blown construction. That's the extreme side of it. I think if we get them to the table, we have to look at what are the alternatives to that, so that we can mitigate the impacts on the business districts, right? I don't want to, I don't want any of you to think that this is a possibility, but I've seen this before, where instead of a full-blown construction, they write a check. And then you can bank that money for future improvements along the way. They haven't done that in my, based on my knowledge, in over a decade. They, that might be another angle we could pursue with them. But there are options, other than a full-blown JT. And we'd have to look at what level of liability we want to take on, because I think that would be the, their ability to say yes.
Thank you. So, now let's talk.
Can I just say, I'm sorry, Kim, the, I think all these points, and people who live up in Hubbard Woods know that district. I try to, if I'm not going to one of the establishments, I try to avoid that, driving through Hubbard Woods as much as I can, because it's just lights and traffic and so on and so forth. The one thing I don't think you need, Jody, is a stop sign at Linden. I think, up north at Linden. I think it's too close to the, I have a daughter that lives right there. It's not really a walkway out of the Benny's Lot and stuff like this. I mean, so I think you would just be interrupting traffic flow a little bit. So, so I, I think having the Merrill stop sign would be great. But that, the Linden, I don't think is, is necessary. But I respect everything that was said from the business owners here. It shouldn't be a stepchild. I mean, we should do what we can to move something along here.
Lots of discussion about this, I guess it's called the horseshoe. And I have to say, I really tried to think out of the box a little bit, like you have here. And at first, I looked at option three and said, okay, that's crazy. But then, as everybody, as everyone's talking and I'm listening, you know, I thought about my own behavior as I go into Gage Street, and I'm looking for a parking spot right in front of, you know, the bagel shop or whatever. Okay, I can't get one. Okay, I'm gonna turn the corner and go to the train station. And then if I don't hit one, it's almost like I turn left on Merrill and just go, okay, I'm gonna go start looking again in town. It's almost like Merrill isn't, isn't, you know, a street or an area. And then I thought, well, this concept in number three actually makes Merrill have a purpose. It, it gives people the in-and-out to the garage and draws attention to the garage. I understand the issue with the carryout parking spots, but I would think that there's a solution, that we could find a solution to that. But I really sort of like the fact, again, also, as we pointed out, that directing the traffic out to go out at the light and adjusting the timing probably is this, is a safe option. Even safer maybe than a stop sign, because as we've all talked about, I think people blow through stop signs more often than they blow through traffic lights. So, I, I have to say, I'm not dismissing option three. It's really, it's really sort of growing on me, because I think it might have some good, a good purpose.
Yeah. And just modify it with, with access to the restaurant.
Mm-hmm. But I mean, I really like the fact it gives a purpose to Merrill and really directs people to the, the parking garage, combined with, you know, enhanced signage. I hate to say it, Rob. And-
I don't mind that, I don't mind, I don't mind that signage. The parking garage signage is just fine.
Yeah.
Everything else. I, I do worry about Merrill being a little frenetic, back and forth. I've been there when people just turn, assuming it's two-way. If you're really worried about people trying to turn left there, I think it just becomes a real, it becomes a, a bit of a circus. That, I, I get why, but I, I think if you're trying to calm traffic down, that just made that Merrill even more frenetic. And that just worries me. I get why you'd want to do that, but I do think we can get people into that garage by fixing it, by enhancing it, landscaping it, lighting it better, having cameras.
The other thing I thought about is Terry said, and I have seen it, that people do go the wrong way down Merrill now. And I don't know how often that occurs, but if-
Really?
Yeah, I've seen it.
Oh, it happens.
Yeah. So, if they're doing it, is it better that we manage it and try to make it safe? I, you know, just throwing out thoughts. Obviously, we're at the beginning.
Here's a one-way sign. They have to look.
Signage doesn't work. Stop signs, one-way signs.
Along the same lines, it was funny when the gentleman from Minos said it would be chaos. I wrote on top of it, chaos, like when I first read it. I do think the, if, with the reverse for the number three, the idea of cars backing up at that light, and then how do, how do people get out of their parking spots because there's cars waiting for a light to turn?
It'd be a nightmare.
Yeah, I don't think that's, I think that's problematic.
I don't understand what you're saying.
Look at option three. If all of the traffic is going out at the light- Look at option three. If all of the traffic is going out at the light.
It's option two and three.
Two and three. Okay, whatever. Yeah, two and three.
Yeah.
The reversal makes, so I, I'm at option one myself, although I do see the benefit of getting people into the parking garage. But I think that cars backing up is a real thing, and trucks backing up there, and then people are trying to get out of their parking spots, they're waiting for the light to change. Can all of the people there, waiting for the light, get through? Or are you then stuck in a parking spot for a while in front of the bagel? You know, I don't know. One thought. And then the other thought I had, which now Chris has gone, is that the IDOT thing is starting to sound problematic. And if, and if we could split it, that seems like a good way to do it. Also, it seems like we could do a pretty good job to get Hubbard Woods better than it is now, faster, if we did do a partial agreement with them instead of the full thing.
One last thing on what you just said. I was at, parked at the Glencoe Public Library right across from Apple A Day, at a shower. It took me four lights to be able to back up. It was unbelievable, because cars kept coming. There's nowhere to back up, but this is exactly what would happen at that corner. Four lights to get out.
I've got a lot of comments. So I enjoy this stuff. This is near and dear to my heart. I do live close to Hubbard Woods. I've seen all the same things that everyone has seen about cars going the wrong way, the safety issues. I guess, and some of this will be a repeat for Jody, David, and Jim, when we had the kickoff, in terms of my reactions, but I still have the same perspectives today. I think that the first thing we all need to decide is, like, how Jody had started the presentation. Are we, are we thinking of this for pedestrians as the primary user, or vehicles? And I don't want to say it's a trade-off, you have to pick one or the other, but I'm gonna be adamant that, as we are all evidencing about the issues, are all pedestrian safety-related. I mean, I haven't heard anybody say they're worried about a car crash killing another person in a car. It's about cars killing people, or affecting people. So I would, I would argue that we should focus on the solutions that improve safety and focus on pedestrians. And ultimately, the pedestrians are the ones that want to get into the businesses, and I think there's a lot of downstream benefits that come out of that, using that as the primary focus. And I'm gonna go back, the questions I asked earlier, Jody, if we can go back, just, I'm gonna go through somewhat random on some of it, but I'm gonna start out with the Tower piece. So first, and for the record, I live just east of Green Bay, just south and south of Tower. So, my kids, our family, we use that intersection all the time. And I would say, a couple thoughts. I think we really need to study true accessibility throughout the district. And when I say accessibility, I'm thinking of like, people that are mobility impaired pedestrians. The way we have the pedestrian crosswalk set up on the east side of this, basically at Green Bay and Tower on the east side, it's not accessible right now. In fact, it's, it's kind of scary even watching someone, like kids on bikes. I mean, it is like, I'm, when I see families pulling up there, and I'm like, who's gonna careen, you know, a kid that doesn't know how to operate their bike on training wheels? So I would suggest, just as we did on the west side, there's a like, triangle-type pattern with the pedestrian crossings, that we do something similar on the east side. And we think of, like, even to the east over the bridge, when you get to Old Green Bay.
Yeah, that's messy.
What is, you know, if you think about like, the folks from the west side of Weneka, trying to get to the beaches, and it's predominantly Towers are a big one, or, you know, Maple is the other one. This is a major, not just within the district, but a thoroughfare for families to try to get to the beach, or the lake, and choices. So I would encourage us to really think through accessibility and pedestrian safety comprehensively, like, every point, like, think through all the danger issues and things that could go wrong here. Because, I mean, as it lays out right now, it just like, or if I think of like, somebody in a walker or wheelchair, you can't use the eastern side of the, this map right here. You can't cross. It's the slope is too steep and.
Yeah, you're talking about the ramps are too steep.
Correct.
Yeah, absolutely. And so, any streetscape improvement would have to meet that requirement.
Yeah. And I would say, like, rethinking how we, you know, where the signals are, rethinking just how pedestrians use it. And coupled with that is the entrance to the parking lot on the south side of Tower, and also, the cleaners and Adams. I know we're limited, like you said, on what we can do, and the gas station to a lesser degree. But while we're, let's comprehensively think through, what are the things we really can do to improve safety and access to those properties? And I would suggest, right now, we do have a entrance to the parking lot, kind of at the midpoint on Tower Road, between the, you know, the eastern, whatever, north-south of Green Bay, and the western, north-south of Green Bay. Just a thought. But what if we were to redesign the entrance to that parking lot, so that parking lot entrance aligned with the western signal? And so that, you know, I don't know how this would work, but just as you do on the Tower Court entrance off of that signal, if there's a way to integrate that so cars could safely come and go from that parking lot, in tandem with the, whatever the signaling is of the intersection. Correct.
And getting access somewhere.
If, if that could, and I'm not an engineer, I would say, if that could improve safety and access, and improve, just the, I mean, to be honest, the only time we use that entrance to the parking lot is if we're coming from a soccer game, we're cutting through to go to get something at McDonald's on the way home. And it's like, but I, I don't even know if I've exited that parking lot there, but it just, to me, feels like another impediment for folks wanting to come to Hubbard Woods, to find easy parking, to then quickly walk to the businesses in the neighborhood. So if there's a way to improve that, that access point, from a safety and just a circulation standpoint, I think that would help. And as well, you know, I'm just gonna reiterate the thing, let's not, let's not just assume that the curb cuts for the businesses are in the right spot. And I, the comment made about Tower Court and the entrance right there, maybe there's, just like, thinking about the parking lot that you just, we just talked about, but the entrance to Tower Court making that more inviting, safer, et cetera. Like, I think there's a lot in it. I'll bring up the, just like Glencoe's put in, the medians, because of the JT they have. But, and right now, it's functional and it's easy on Tower Road, but it is a, whatever, over a three-lane wide road. And if there is a way to soften that up and improve, you know, if there is an opportunity by cleaning up the curb cuts entrances, to do a crosswalk where there's even a, a safe zone in between the roads, so if somebody does get stuck in between, you know, because I, I see it over and over again, like, kids are crossing every which way on bikes in that intersection.
They are. And so, there's, you know, there's like the bidirectional turn lane, I think, in some parts of this. So, once we do a median, that means that we cut off access to some.
But maybe not all of it.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah. And right now, I look at it, I'm like, oh, this is like, from an engineering standpoint, it's efficiently laid out with the bidirectional turn lane. Like, yeah, that's great. But it's like, if, if we add in the element of, you know, the desire to have this a pedestrian-focused neighborhood. And I understand the challenge with this, with two heavily trafficked corridors, with, you know, this weird kind of offset on the road. The other thing, the, Kim, you made the comment about the bicycles, and we've talked about it. It never really occurred to me, you know, we're, we're talking about, right, the groups of, you know, whatever cyclists that want to buzz through here. But I know in the last couple of years, there's been a heavy focus for us, thinking through, like, walking your bikes through the downtowns. And the prospect of trying to get a bunch of 12- or 14-year-olds to stop at the south end here, and to walk, whatever, four or five blocks up the sidewalk with their bike nicely, is just, that happening in reality is just not gonna happen. And I don't think, in reality, the way it is right now, because, and I agree with lowering the speed limits as much as we can, expecting kids to feel safe riding on the road. And I think, you know, just one comment that was made, and, or maybe I'm piecing together some comments earlier, is, could Tower Court be improved such that it is, not necessarily for the, the fast groups of, you know, professional bicyclists, but.
For the kids.
As a promoted place for kids to get through, so they can still feel like they can hang out the park, and cut down to McDonald's, and, like, really thinking through from a, again, you know, when we're out as families, it's like, you know, we're sort of controlling the flow with our families. But when the kids are free to do whatever they want, and if, if there's an easy path, and they know, I can just buzz, get across right here at this intersection, and buzz up to the park, in a safer manner than going up Tower Road.
It would be, I mean, ever since I grew up there, that's always been creepy to go back there. It just is creepy, and there's no reason it should be. I mean, it's like, I feel like it's like rusted-up bed springs. I mean, it's, I feel like it's one of those areas you could really make decent and use it.
And thinking like, the, the whole concept that everyone talks about in the last dozen years, it's like, you know, the Dutch term vu nerf, you know, like, that, maybe there's something we could do without spending a lot of money, because it's, if I recall, it's a nice concrete alley. But maybe it's simple things, lighting, or just, you know, striping, or ways to even, what the green painted dash line to, you know, hey, you know, pedestrians and bikes can go down here. I think there's some creative thinking we can do to allow kids, or anyone, to either go east or west down Tower.
To get off.
But also to go north-south, without really just, really hamstringing them to, I mean, I can't imagine telling, expecting a 14-year-old group of boys to walk their bike from Tower Road all the way up to Merrill. It's just not gonna happen.
And at the same time, like, alleys are cool spaces that could be, you know.
And I don't know what the answer is, but I think, just thinking through, like, what is, if we have a user.
That's a hidden dam.
Like, how do we figure it out? And I'm not saying that's the answer, but like, the, the other, while we're on this, the comment about cars blowing through the stop sign at, just west of here, on Tower, and whatever, whatever that is.
Gordon Terrace.
Gordon Terrace. I've almost done it myself, and I think part of the challenge with that intersection is, like, I'm not having a conversation, or I'm just zoning out, and it's, it doesn't feel like a stop sign. It just, I see straight all the way through, and I, I think that's part of the challenge there. I mean, just, that's a whole separate topic, but I bring that up as an example of, like, you know, when we're creating environments, it's not just about putting a stop sign there, like, thinking through what happens at Merrill with, you know, whether it's one-way, two-way, and all that. But I think, like, and I know that's part of the plan with sticking the curb cuts, or whatever, the pedestrian crossings further out in the intersection, and creating those, you know, viewable spaces to create more safe. But I would say, we need to take into consideration, I've got some other comments, if you want to go up to the next thing.
Yeah.
And, actually, the next one up to the, actually, if you go to the horseshoe, the three horseshoe things. So I'm, I'm completely biased here, and this is coming from my own perception, not necessarily anything based in fact, or I'm right, or anything, but I just, my, my reaction, I know I've said this from day one, I'm not a big fan of stoplights in pedestrian-focused downtowns. If we had to design a downtown from scratch that was pedestrian-focused, would we put stoplights in it? And I'm, my opinion would be no. And I've seen example and example, again, of communities where either I've grown up, or that I'm familiar with, where I see the successful pedestrian-focused with heavy retail success are downtowns where I don't see any stoplights. And they might be on the outsides, and sort of, sort of as the gatekeepers to the downtown. But if we're creating a, a true pedestrian-focused downtown feel, I, and I, I can stand corrected in terms of, you know, the, the need for the school, and stacking for cars, and just vehicular traffic, and I have other comments about these three options. But I question the need for a stoplight at Gage and Green Bay. I think it's easy to say, well, we have it today, so we shouldn't get rid of it. But if, and I understand completely the concern and risk of having people blowing through stop signs, and, you know, like, someone's crossing. But I also argue, and it's not scientific, it's just my own opinion, like, if someone, not that it would necessarily be, but if someone's vision impaired, or someone just wasn't paying attention, and they're across the street, guaranteed that someone's gonna be driving through the intersection 20 or 25 miles an hour. And if it's a stop sign, then it's a matter of if they are blowing through the stop sign because they weren't paying attention, or because they're doing it, you know, to blow through a stop sign illegally. But your chances of, and if you are getting hit by a car through an intersection with stop signs versus a signal in the section, I would argue, you know, getting hit by a car traveling five or 10 miles per hour as it's accelerating, is probably a lot less damage than if someone's going 25 and just blowing right through, and kids not paying attention. So, that's my personal opinion. I would, it'll all be borne out by the, the traffic study. But I would argue that if we're gonna have a stop sign at Merrill, which I believe is critical, that I would suggest that we, and I would be highly encouraging us to consider a stop sign at Gage, and truly make this a downtown environment where people feel safe. And especially if we do the bumpouts, which I am, for the record, fully in favor of the JT, so we can do the, the pedestrian bumpouts, which improve safety. It'll make those four corners, or at least the three developed corners on each of Gage and Merrill, like the most prime real estate in town because of the, I mean, think about what Hometown gained for free with all that outside extra area they got. And it would be great to have that same effect here, where families can. Yeah, you got a bench literally two or three feet away from the intersection. In fact, that's a great example.
Starbucks, too.
Starbucks and Pete's. Like, I have absolutely no concern and fear hanging out just feet away from an intersection on a bench, or kids and little, walking and going, because it, it's designed for that traffic calming, slowing folks down. And I would argue, if we're pedestrian-focused, we could have the same feeling here.
I'm gonna push back just a little bit on that, because I agree with you. I would love to see Hubbard Woods as a pedestrian-friendly downtown. Tina, I think of it, I think of Green Bay Road as that Main Street and downtown Holland. I mean, I actually can vision that. But the difference is, and this is where I'm gonna push back, is, this is a thoroughfare that runs from Evanston all the way to Milwaukee. It was probably one of the first established roadways, north to south. And so, what we would be trying to do, would be to be training a region that this is no longer a thoroughfare from Evanston to Milwaukee when it comes to Weneka. I'm not saying we can't do it.
Lincoln and Chest that are inner streets.
Yeah. I mean, they're, they're off the thoroughfare.
Right.
And, you know, I mean, we do have to understand, I think somebody said it already, that, you know, we have to be pragmatic about the fact that it is Green Bay Road.
Yeah, big difference.
I mean, and there's gonna be trucks, and there's gonna be, it's a thoroughfare. And I, while I love the idea of the stop signs from a pedestrian aspect, I walk every morning up there, and I see the traffic stacked up from Tower going back into Hubbard Woods at 8:00, 8:30 in the morning. And it stacks up pretty, pretty far. And, and the evening, it's the other way. It tends to be more of a northbound thing. And when you think about how that, all that traffic would be stacked up with stop signs.
Stop sign.
Instead of allowing a large bunch of them to clear, I mean, it's something we have to consider, that there are people coming through our town that aren't stopping to shop and eat. I don't know how we reconcile that, but I think we have to, we do have to acknowledge that Green Bay isn't Lincoln or.
Totally agree with that. Yeah, I'm not suggesting we try to, let's say, you know, prevent the, whatever, industry from using the road. But, I mean, if we're thinking about a mid-block crosswalk just to the south of Gage, and a stop sign to the north, it just begs the question in my mind, what are we gaining from keeping that stop sign, again, to be proven out? Because I know we've got the school and morning rush hour and all that. The other thing I question is, is if we're, I would argue that we should not be concerned with the amount of time it takes a vehicle to get from one end of Hubbard Woods to the other. I would just suggest, take that off the table. I don't, again, if we're doing a pedestrian focus, focus on the business. It's not about, like, how quick can I make my commute so I can rush through this area? I don't, I just don't agree with that, sort of, like, part of the equation. In fact, if anything, I think, I'm not a business owner, but I would hope, I would, I would think that business owners want folks to slow down, so they can actually see, oh, there's whatever, this shop and that shop, or I can take my time to be able to parallel park, and not feel like, you know, it's a scary situation with cars trying to cut around you.
I'm with you on that. I just, I, my only concern is what Chris said, which is, when it backs up, if you don't move cars through, it almost becomes potentially more dangerous for pedestrians, because you're basically trying to get people, you can't get out of your parking spaces, when it's, it's gonna be backed up from that Gage Street all the way around by the gas station, you're not gonna be able to get out of your parking spots. So, you're still gonna have to move people. I agree with, I agree with you. I'd love to make it as friendly as possible, but I still think it's gonna be, create a worse situation for pedestrians and locals that are trying to park in those businesses if we stop the way, if we stop that. I agree, taking the, I'd do the traffic down to 19 miles an hour. Because people think.
Slow them down, but let them roll.
And let them roll. But that's, but I understand, it should be.
And I hear you. You know, it's just one person's opinion. I would say, on these three options. Yeah, it's just one person's opinion. I would say, on these three options, I, I really, in fact, maybe a side note, you know, Glenn's comment, I would encourage, if we haven't done, and I know this is a format for everyone, but to, to do another open, not necessarily an open house, just a, a public discussion forum, to be able to really just engage with the community. I know that the, the open house we did, and I'm not trying to, I'm, just one suggestion, is just to open up so we can hear more dialogue and personal feedback, you know, like, at a roundtable with whoever wants to attend, just a suggestion. But I would say, I, I'm not, because I'm not there every day watching what's happening with cars, like, some of the folks that have talked here tonight. My, my reaction on these three, I'm just telling you, right, like, there's not necessarily anything negative about them, but I, I'm actually partial, and I'm echoing Kim's comments, to option three. And it has to do with a couple of things. Number one, when we had the kickoff, we talked about why the one-way is the way it is, and I think it's because of the alley coming up from the south with the turning radius, if I recall. I, I am thinking through the access, if, if the, one of the major concerns in our shopping districts is parking, and we're trying to promote parking. I already said my comments about the south parking lot, south of Tower. But if, many things with the parking garage here, but if we're trying to improve access, not just to, but also folks thinking through, well, if I have to park in the garage, and I got to get back, whatever, down Scott, or wherever I've got to go, what's the quickest way for me to get out of there? Option three actually is the easiest in and out, and also just from a, someone that might not be familiar with the community, knowing, like, here's the cookie-crum trail I got to get there, and here's how I get out. The other thing is, it, in this opinion, I'm, I'm not an engineer, so it's not fact, just, I would guess that having two points of access out of there with option three is going to reduce the, whatever, the pressure on either intersection. If we have only one exit, then it's guaranteed, that's going to, right, think of, like, if there's an event, or just general use, guaranteed, we're going to be creating more vehicles coming in and out of that, the Gage intersection, if it's option two. I'm actually just, when I think about also the other thing about, if I'm a visitor, and I'm trying to find parking, right turns are always safer and easier than left turns. And option one, the way it is today, is probably the worst setup you could ask for, and it's probably the most dangerous. And allowing people just to keep on going in circles if they can't find parking is probably the easiest and safest thing that we could, we could offer. I'll just add on the parking garage. I'm sorry for going on about this, but to get out. I appreciate the comments. What can we do now, just to have some early wins? And the, you know, a lot of the questions about the parking garage, and hasn't been necessarily a focus of this study. But I would suggest that we could integrate that with a study, but that could be something we could expedite without any involvement, right, from a JT consideration. And I'm just going to add, everything about that parking garage, not, not suggesting rebuild, but definitely rehabbing it, all the suggestions that were made, but also accessibility, wayfinding. I would even argue, like, on the north side off of Scott, you really don't even know the parking garage is there. And when you, the few times I have parked there to go pick up a pizza, like, I'm, you know, walking down these kind of old steel stairs that are right next to a dumpster, and, and I'm like, and how accessible is that for, you know, to really promote people coming, like, I'm, in my mind, just similar to, like, what we did, or what was done at the Elm Street train station, where, and I know this, there's a lot of dollars associated with this, but can we throw in some sort of way for truly, like, fully accessible parking garage, not just to the upper level or to the lower level, but between them? Not for vehicles, but pedestrians, or, you know, the whole idea with, you know, the mural idea, or lighting, or even making, improving the, you know, brick facing, and just everything about it. But I would encourage us, like, let's get that going now, because, and have that done in advance of any of the work, because we're going to really need those parking lots done up nicely in advance of whenever the roadway is going to be worked on. Oh, the last comment I'll make, I think this is my last comment, whenever the train station is done, I know we've got some early concepts, but whatever the future use could be of the train station, just like we have a cafe or a coffee shop that's embedded within the Elm Street station, is, is there other potential use here? And then, can we enhance the
It's in.
Not just the seating for the purpose of the train station, but kind of like we do at the street corners and these options, you know, benches, whatnot, can we add those elements around the train station, so if there's some other commercial retail-type use there, that that's a little bit of its own destination?
The station buildout contemplated a potential commercial use there.
Okay.
I'm in favor of brew pub.
A brew pub.
All right. I think that's all my comments. So, thanks for indulging me.
Okay. Okay.
I just quickly want to add on the option, because I don't think I addressed that. I, I can be agnot, I'm not as, as firmly wedded on the horseshoe one. I do think option three has some interesting potential, but obviously mindful of the impact to Minos. But I think it could be safer. And we spent a lot of time in 2016 looking at it for that reason, right? You know, all those things, you know, right turns are safer than left turns. So, I, I have support for option three, but that's not going to be my biggest issue. My biggest issue is the traffic calming the bumpouts. By having the mid-block crossing between Gage and Tower, I think is critical, especially with Walgreens there, too, which, you know, all these uses can change over time, but I think it's, you know, you have a lot of people crossing the road in a dangerous situation. And my biggest issue is getting a stop sign at Merrill. So, those are all my, and I just...
And I would like to ask for a, option three B, which is just two-way on Merrill, and the rest of it stays the way it is.
Yeah, I, I don't, I, we just went through a lot of discussion about why you don't want traffic letting out in Gage, with this, with the park, and with those parking spaces trying to back out.
Well, I, I would actually say, right now, I think Gage is worse, because what happens is, and just hear me out, because when you come, with the way it is now, you have cars that the, the parking stalls are very close to the edge. And so, you, you really have cars backing up, and then people whipping around the corner. I have seen more kind of conflicts, but I think it's something, we're not traffic engineers. I think it's just one of these things we have to, and I do think you're kind of coming at it from the big picture of, if we're going to look at this, look at it from the safety of pedestrians, I think is the right way to think of it. But that's it. And I, I'd be open to considering getting rid of the light, although I think the light is required when an arterial has a certain amount of roads, and you're within a certain amount of feet to the school. And I think that that might have been the reason why it was put in. But those standards may have changed. But anyway, those are my comments.
Okay. So, one, one piece of direction I would like to give staff is to get the traffic study going.
Yes.
We all good with that?
Yes.
Rob, I asked him quietly over here a couple minutes ago, if you guys have heard everything that you need to hear relative to our input. Jody, it's time for you to go back and digest all this, and, you know, I would expect, I don't know what your contract calls for, but I think, obviously, we want to come back with something a little bit more, this is what we heard, this is what, this is where we're starting to go, and we should get back at the table at that point in time.
And initial discussions with IDOT?
Yes, definitely. I mean, I'm going to reach out and ask Jim and Rob to continue to pastor them. The problem is, I don't, I don't know anybody who can open those doors. So, if somebody does know somebody who can open those doors...
Yeah, I may, I may as well.
Well, then, Jim, we've been waiting two years. Open the door.
There's new contacts established.
New contacts?
There's been major staff changes.
Oh, really? Thank goodness. Maybe we'll get somewhere. Well, that's a big question. Maybe they come to our office.
Is, is one other to do is taking a look at that parking garage and what can be done?
Yes.
I've got it on the list.
So, we all have to keep in mind, and, and Rob, this is for you, and, and probably, I don't know if it's Jim or...
Tom.
Tom. But, you know, budget time is when we have to set aside the money to do that stuff. We can do a lot of planning now, get some estimates done, but, you know, we have to...
Find the money.
We got to set the money aside, and maybe we can ask somebody for something, too. Who knows? But I don't think Metro's in a giving mood these days.
This might be totally irrelevant, but actually, this weekend at the farmer's market, a gentleman came up and asked, was asking about Hubbard Woods and other streets, and he says there's a brand-new federal program called Safe Streets for All. Okay, so, I'm sure we're all aware of potential funding there. Passing it on.
Thank you.
Good. Good discussion.
Yep.
I know, probably didn't give you all the answers you wanted in black and white, but, you know, it's a process, right?
Absolutely. No, this is all been really, really helpful.
Awesome. All right. Well, we still have work to do tonight, folks, so let me read this sad paragraph, and we'll move forward. "I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn to closed session for the purpose of discussing closed-session minutes and pending or probable litigation pursuant to Section 2C21 and 2C11 of the Open Meetings Act. Under the motion, when we adjourn the closed session, this meeting will automatically and immediately adjourn without the conduct of any further business or comments. May I have that motion?"
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, vote.
Trustee Handler?
Yes.
Trustee Ursick?
Yes.
Trustee Apitoff?
Yes.
Trustee Dahlman?
Yes.
Trustee Albenson?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.